I'm back, it's zoom right in.
I keep this phone still on my desk. It'll work.
The only time I do this is when you're with us. You were like, "I'm sure it's true."
Yeah.
Okay.
[inaudible]
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 Okay.
[inaudible]
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 Huh?
[inaudible]
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 I got the last one.
[inaudible]
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 Why is there?
You can't make comments.
Did I eat you?
[inaudible]
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 Somebody else parked it.
Oh, boy, not mine, though, that's good.
I mean, confused if I had parked it.
No, I just...
I always park it.
And nobody has several states that's parking it now.
Yeah, I always say, "Oh, girl."
And every time it used to happen to be...
Yeah, you made a comment.
I don't park there anymore.
I figured I'd just take it and take it up.
Really, really less.
Right.
Yeah, he came twice around to make sure, okay.
Which is my spot.
Actually, the council, I don't park there anymore.
[inaudible]
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 Yeah, he came twice around to make sure, okay.
Which is my spot.
Actually, the council, I don't park there anymore.
[inaudible]
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 I call this regular meeting of the town council to order. Please join me in the place of leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary, please call a roll. Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Yes.
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mr. Son?
Here.
Mrs. Reddick?
Here.
April, May, June?
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to open the floor to residents or property owners who would like to address the council.
Father Lamb, 99 Land Town Road. I asked Council Clark that she would provide the members of the council with a timber harvest. Did you get that?
Yes.
Okay. Looking at what was written in the contract, seems like the town has got cake. If you look at the price of wood on today's market, firewood, random length, forty dollars a cord, sawlies, depending on what they are, which we have no idea because nobody checked them. You can hear anywhere from forty to forty cents a board foot. I was up here three times, saw the stacks of logs that were removed from the property. Nobody knows what the price of those could be. So if you look what the town received, roughly under thirty-six hundred dollars, that price should have been around sixteen to eighteen thousand dollars. That's market price for that type of material. If we do in the future, which I understand we have some property outside the subways, which might be another contract made up, please get somebody that's experienced as a professional forester that is hired by the town to protect our interests. Any questions?
Can I just make a comment? That's exactly the same. He said exactly what council song says at the last meeting. We were aware that we believed we did not receive enough money. And we also, it's a scale. Yeah, we also realized we need to have someone representing the town's interest.
But the stuff being outside, we have nobody on staff.
Correct, correct.
As a town employee that has the knowledge.
Right, the scaler is a...
Is a guy that knows logging terminology.
Right, and that's, that was exactly the conversation we had at the last council meeting.
And a couple of members I've already met with, we talked about members of the up and down sawmill, which have that knowledge. We have a guy that does sawing on Weller Pond Road. We also have some people on Deer Road that are residents that have a lot of knowledge.
Correct, we were aware of that.
We have the resources, but we don't have them on staff.
Correct.
The others, I believe you've got Article, Ordinance 45.
Could I comment on that? Because we're going to a different point. So I just wanted to share with the rest of the council that I spoke with Mr. Lamb on Monday, spoke with him on Friday. On Friday, I spoke with mayor, I spoke with the director of public works, and made a recommendation, and I think we're all in agreement on the recommendation, that when we, if we log property again, by the way, we agree that we learned a lesson in this particular contract. We would number one, get an outside forester to mark the tree's forest. What happened in this contract was the forester and the lumber products company came to the mayor. The mayor brought it to land use. The land use commission looked at the agreement and said, "Yeah, let's do this. Let's see what we can get." And the lesson we've learned is, what we should do next time is get an independent forester to go out and mark the tree's forest, then put it out to bid. And get bids from three different lumber companies proposing how much wood they would pull out of there. So they would all follow the same rules. And one of the points about the lumber that came out of the town property is that was, they did a very limited cut. In other words, they took dead dying diseased trees as well as some sawtimber. That's a very different cut than a harvest where you go ahead and get the biggest trees in all of them. So that's part of the reason we got less money. But we still, we agree with you, Mr. Lamb, that we probably could have done this better. So we'll get a forester to mark the trees, put it out to bid, and then as Council Helen said, we would get a scaler to supervise the operation. And I have the names of the people that you and I talked about. And I plan to contact them and see if they would help us.
Next item. We were looking at reviewing ordinance 45 that the town has on record since 1988. I believe it's still in effect as we speak today, correct?
Correct.
Okay. If you look at some very critical points in this ordinance, and I'm talking about the last road, Bittersweet, off of Avery Hill, which was accepted by the town council. The dates and the way it was done is incorrect according to this ordinance. The road was approved by the Public Works Director on September 8th. And it was opened on that day, which according to the ordinance, the road cannot be opened until the deed is unfiled with the town clerk's office. That happened on December 4th of last year. So the town assumed responsibility without legally getting the ordinance followed. And as we speak today, I believe that the plan that was submitted by the developer has a lot of issues that the public works director should be, I brought it to his attention three times. Today was a heavy rainy day. I believe the mayor's assistants took a trip out there this afternoon to actually see the conditions. There is numerous violations according to this contract that he provided the town, the committees, subcommittees, and the council approved that they be adhered to. So here we go. We filed it during the storms that weren't a legal town road according to Article 45, ordinance 45, excuse me. So I think some tightening by the council, which is the governing authority, to accept and reject new streets, subdivisions, whatever. You had good faith when you received the plan, but the developer has hoodwinked you for the town in regards to living up to his end of the bargain. Hopefully, in the very quick future, that it's taken care of because it's only getting worse. And due to the changes, there is no guarantee, only what I'm told by a CEO. Once the house is finished and ready for sale, you hold the CEO up if there's any outstanding issues. There is a home that's done there now, there's a for sale sign on it, and there is a lot of issues that should be addressed. And most of these fall under the Director of Public Works. Also, I asked around the town hall that the signage was supposed to be reimbursed by the developer. And at this day, and it might be because there's a medical leave problem with the public works, there has been no bill sent or payment received. Nobody knows what's going on. So the street has got signage, but up until December, it was illegal. So the liability to the taxpayers could have been extensive if there was some sort of an injury or accident on that part of the highway. Hopefully, you'll take care of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other residents or property owners wishing to address the council?
My name's Larry Alfreds, 26 Cliff Road, Stony Gate Village. I'm here strictly as an FYI to tell, we believe happened from the residents' point of view, on the suit that Garden Homes has against the zoning commission. We met with the mayor on December 3rd, and the purpose was to see what was negotiable, what could be negotiable in that suit. We left with the intention of having a meeting with residents, which we did have on December 6th. And we came up with a consensus, which I'll hand out to you later, which we highlighted three items that were non-negotiable. And that's the heat requirement, boost of facilities, community center, and the five twelve pitch house, the homehouse being less than twenty foot from the road. On the February 7th, we followed up with a letter to the mayor, just reminding him that we're still active on this. And also to alert him that I filed a complaint for a, with the Department of Consumer Protection for declaratory judgment as to five items we felt were most severe. We've been signing case number, and a person, an investigator, looked into this. Now, we know that Garden Homes responded very lightly on this. Two of the items they hide behind say that there's litigation going on, they don't want to comment. And the others, they just push aside. So at any rate, I just wanted to bring you up to date in a copy of the letter.
Thank you.
Any questions right there? Okay, thank you very much.
What was the third of your three conditions? Or was it the one before that?
Use of facilities, they want to use the community center, parking area. They also want to use the vehicle storage unit, which is at the far end of the property. As it is, what they really want and they're pushing for is the removal of the fifty-five page restriction. Now, they already brought one in there with the three twelve pitch. It's really a trailer with a, not with wallboard, but just the plastic walls and so forth. And we're going to ask to have that removed. Right, no, because between twenty-five hundred, three thousand. They're just defining the Consumer Protection Agency as well as our leases on that. They should know better. They do have six thousand homes. So it's not lack of experience. So at any rate, it's just for your information and keep your present. Thank you.
Could I comment to that to Mr. Holmes?
Sure. The reason I ask about the use of the community center is just coincidentally, I was at the WPCA meeting last night, and they're in receipt of a letter from Garden Way Homes asking that the town, well, the WPCA, change their status from a commercial property on a community center to residential because they're paying a higher rate as a commercial property for the water. And they're saying, "We don't use our minimum usage on a monthly basis." I think the issue is whether they are really a residential property. It's a business, but just for your information there. And so the letter said, "If we don't get relief on this, we're going to consider turning the water off."
Yeah. I'm not going to really comment too much on my children's thoughts going home.
I think we know.
That was just FYI to you.
Yeah, there you go.
But I'm about as strong as a brick wall as you can get. I may eat three, and I'll be here, I'll be here until all of this is straightened out. So they just haven't hit the run-of-the-mill person, a person sale.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other residents or property owners wishing to address the council? Hearing non-committee, commission, and board reports. We have tonight the presentation for the police facility. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. I'll stand over here because I'm going to speak for a few minutes. And this is really by way of introduction. Neither myself or the building committee has made a presentation to the town council on this particular facility. But so I want to take an opportunity to give some background and also a status. I appreciate that there are members of the building committee here this evening, and we do have our architect here, and that he will do most of the presentation. But what I wanted to do is just, first of all, give some background. As I stated before publicly, there are three emergency services decisions that I intend to make as soon as possible. The first is the future of the police department. Second is the future of emergency dispatch. And finally, and it ties in, all three of these, providing an acceptable police facility. This is not something I initiated. This is something that's, some of these have been going on for upon twenty years. You're all familiar with, or you should all be familiar with, the current police facility. Please hold your applause and chuckles. But by way of background, this facility, parts of it leased are over a hundred years old. It was purchased in 1998. It was leased for a few years before that. The building is very high maintenance, and a decision was made, has been made between Mayor Allen, myself, and the council that we just do not want to put the amount of money into it that's required. So we're just limping along. For example, it's estimated that we would need two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars next year, or right now, to bring that up to some level of adequacy. I just want to now go into the administrative process, review the administrative process. On May 9th, the town council authorized twenty thousand dollars to be spent for architectural services. On June 21st of last year, the town council assigned this project to the permanent municipal building committee, who then prepared an RFQ, received four proposals. And on July 10th, the committee chose Chakinskey and Hughes. Brian Hughes is here this evening. He has been working, as you can see from these dates, that the building committee has been working on this diligently for a while. Just the process, and I'm sure Brian will go into this more. Site identification and down selection of sites, needs assessment, space assessment, floor plan development, and then finally, cost determination. As far as site identification, I want to get into this a little bit because there has been some publicity about the sites. Initially, the town council was assigned, the land use committee, to recommend sites. They recommended six sites that, to be looked at, those that are an asterisk. Okay, the...
You can't see the asterisk.
Former lightyear firehouse next to the town hall right here. The transfer station alongside Jalfur Clark Way and Fairway Drive back. It's really part of the town property where the school and the fairgrounds are. And then an additional site was identified by the building committee, and that is the former Yales Ferry School. You may remember that about a year ago, I recommended that we look at that as a possible site for the police. We had some discussions about it with the police, myself, the council. I severely underestimated the price that, or the cost it would take to put them in there. I never saw that as a permanent solution with the building as it is. I saw that as a temporary solution, and we just did not pursue that at the time. As far as the down selection goes, I will tell you that there are three sites that are under consideration now, in no particular order. Again, the former Yales Ferry School, the former firehouse, and the transfer station. Those are the ones right now that the building committee is investigating, looking at site plans or the cost to upgrade in the case of the school. With that, I'm going to turn it over actually to Brian. Did I call you? Brian Hughes. Turn it over to Brian Hughes, who has been working with the building committee. Again, the building committee members are here. So if you have other questions, we'd be happy to help you.
Thank you, Mayor. And hello, council. Brian Hughes, Chakinskey Hughes Architects. Nice introduction. And it defines the scope of work that we have been performing along with municipal building committee since last July. And as was described earlier, it's a four-part process that we are contracted to perform. And Chakinskey Hughes Architects has been specializing in public safety and police projects since we've started in business sixteen years ago. And in the last sixteen years, I have personally programmed and designed over sixty police stations throughout New England. So with that expertise and experience in police facilities, I found that this process that you're undertaking in Ledger is one that defines exactly what the needs are, and then systematically goes through a process to come out with a solution and a cost. That process is first to do a space needs assessment. A lot of times when we come into a community, the police department is woefully inadequate. Our initial review of alleged police station showed us the same. You have a facility that is in need of repair, a facility that's underperforming for the staff, it's tight in quarters, it's substandard, there's some potential liabilities that exist in and around that facility. There's some security issues that we can identify. So we never find a good situation when we come into a community. We found here that it's a facility that's been needing improvement for some time, and just now you're looking to find a solution and address those needs. So a space needs assessment was performed and presented to the building committee on August of 2012. We started this task in July, so in August, we turned around the first draft of a space needs assessment. When we performed the space needs assessment, we did it in cooperation with current staff. Lieutenant Finkelstein assisted me, and the resident state trooper assisted me, and also staffing within the department assisted me to determine what the needs were. Not determine, not to determine what square footage was required, but to help me determine what the needs of your specific department are. We also looked at future growth. When we're looking at a space needs assessment, we don't want to plan a facility for today. We want to plan a facility that meets today's needs and tomorrow's needs. And we try to look out twenty years in advance. That twenty-year projection is typically what a municipality asks us to do because if a project is bonded, it's typically bonded for a twenty-year period. You want to know that this facility is going to last the life of the bond and beyond. And while we look at the needs of the department, we all, we also look at population statistics for Ledger, we looked at growth potential within the department, we looked at vehicles and current and future requirements for vehicles. So it was a comprehensive look. As we look out twenty years, don't let the twenty years scare you. Because in Ledger, we are, while we are seeing some growth potential within the community, the growth potential within the department is not excessive. We are estimating that in the next twenty years, the Ledger Police Department go from twenty-seven sworn officers of its current assignment to a future growth of thirty.
Yeah, twenty-seven.
Yeah, twenty-seven positions, including sworn dispatch personnel.
There is space to the same thing my report.
Yeah.
Where the other six come from?
So the growth potential is not excessive. They're finding that the staffing levels are going to be adequate to meet your future needs, which would also key you in to say this is probably going to be a twenty-plus year facility that you're building. It would probably outlive that twenty-year projection. So whatever you're looking to plan for now, size of the facility, we're looking to be a twenty-plus year facility. The initial space needs assessment looked at current facility size of just over six thousand square feet. Your facility is currently six thousand three hundred and twenty-eight square feet. And it's always a question of how big do we need? And that's where our experience is helpful. We initially came out with a space needs assessment of over fourteen thousand square feet of need. That was pared back through the help of the municipal building committee, working with police staff, and identifying some things that we could reduce, things we could cut back on or eliminate. And we're currently at a projected need assessment of twelve thousand one hundred and thirty square feet. The committee spent a lot of time with that number. They spent a lot of time understanding this document and understanding exactly the parts and pieces that are in it, and questioned the police department as to why it's needed, where it's going to be utilized, how they, how they're getting along without it. where it's going to be utilized, how they're getting along without it. And as I stressed to the Municipal Building Committee, this is your document. This describes a facility that you are looking to build. This is something that the Municipal Building Committee and the police department must endorse and get behind, and if it's not the right size, we can make it smaller, tell me where. And not speaking for the Municipal Building Committee, but I feel that they're coming to a consensus that a 12,000-square-foot facility does address the current future needs of the department as far as size. The next task, once we've identified needs, is now to look at sites. Now we have a defined size of a facility. We have defined within the space needs assessment site requirements. In the site requirements, we're projecting just under two acres per site size. The Municipal Building Committee then assigned us four sites to go do a fit study, that these sites fit the requirements that they're looking at and identifying. As the mayor indicated, there were four sites that we did an evaluation on, and in September of 2012, we produced a site assessment on those four sites. In our evaluation, we looked at the 7th Earl Wood Road property, 737 Colonel Ledger Highway, the J. Alfred Clark Way site, and the Fairway Drive site. All of those four sites are town-owned. That's one of the requirements, I think, we were given those sites, because acquisition costs would not be required on those sites, so those being town-owned. We did an evaluation and assessment, and in our opinion, we had two sites that rose to the top and two sites that kind of fell to the bottom. And the Fairway Drive site, we found that, that's the site adjacent to the fire facility, the Fairway Drive site did not have enough buildable area, and the water company has active wells on that site, and those active wells have a perimeter that we need to maintain, and there were wetlands on the site. We found that that site did not meet the criteria that we were looking for, and that one fell off the list. Working from the bottom up, we found the Gales Ferry School site was problematic in a number of areas. We were downgrading that site. The Municipal Building Committee, in their review, actually found that site to be a little more favorable than we did in our evaluation. The two sites that we felt were very viable for this potential building was the 737 Colonel Ledger Highway site, which is the firehouse adjacent to this town hall, and the J. Alfred Clark Way site at 881 Colonel Ledger Highway. So we reported those findings to the committee, and the committee then tasked us with designing a building. We have two sites that we felt were viable. The Gales Ferry site is still in consideration, but they tasked us to do a floor plan, site plan, for both the town hall site, the firehouse, and the J. Alfred Clark Way site. Now, when we were first contracted for services, we were contracted to do one site for floor plans and site plans. We have not amended our contract. We're still working within the original appropriation, but in order for expediency and not spending additional funds, it was agreed that we would take this site, the town hall site, design a site plan and building, and then transfer that building that was designed for this site over to the Clark Way, because there's very little restraints on the site. So what you're going to see tonight is the identical building on both sites, meaning that the floor plan needs, the space needs of the department and the site needs of the department. And I have handouts. What I have on the boards is exactly what you have in front of you. The two boards that I first put up, the board on the left is the existing conditions at the town hall site. The building in red is the firehouse, the building in blue is your town hall. The site also has some other existing structures on it, the annex that we're in currently on the upper right-hand portion of the site. If you're looking at this site along Colonel Ledger Highway, you can notice that the firehouse is very close to the street. There is no maintained curb line in front of the firehouse because it's a lot of apparatus that was there. And there's also another entrance to the neighboring property. The site also has an existing right-of-way to the property in the rear. And that existing right-of-way is to the left part of the site that goes to the left side of the firehouse to the property in the rear. If we're looking at this site, again, we're talking about a building of 12,000 square feet, and that's shown on the board on the right. How we can take this complex, look at the Ledger Center requirements for planning and zoning, and have this building conform to the Ledger Center zoning requirements. Those requirements are looking to put all parking behind the buildings. That's looking to maintain building lines across the front of the site, sidewalks linking up the properties, and trying to put parkings, major parking, to the rear of the properties. With this site, we're not just tasked with putting a police department on this site, we're also tasked, if that was to happen, on how that would impact the rest of this site. And how it would impact it is there are some smaller structures in the rear of the site that would be demolished and removed. The annex would remain, the town hall would remain, and a new police station would be built in the site of the firehouse that would be demolished and removed. This site does meet both the program requirements for the building and the parking requirements for the police department, both for official vehicles and for staff use. We've also looked on how it would accommodate the parking requirements for town hall and town hall staff, visitors coming to this site, and anybody being occupied by the annex. It is noted on this plan on the board on the right, there's a potential for some land taking from the property in the rear. That's right now being just as proposed, in order to square off the back of the property Two more boards. The board to the right is the Alfred Clark Way site. As I said, for simplicity, we have taken the same building and placed it on the lot. We've taken the same parking requirements of the police department, indicated on the lot. It just so happens that this site is a sloping site. If you're not familiar with it, you might go up there and think we have a lot of property, level land up there. No, it does slope. It slopes from Alfred Clark Way to the south, and so it has a lot of the same slope features that we have here on this site. So we were able to take a similar building, accommodate the slope on this site, accommodate the slope up there in a similar manner. We've taken the building and flipped and rotated it a little bit, but the parking requirements that you see there are strictly now for police use and police needs for vehicles and staff use, and three spaces, some future expansion space for public. There is not a big component for public parking on this site, because this building really has no public component, other than the police lobby coming to get records, coming to access the information. So public parking here is limited because it's short-term. It tends to be a short-term in and out again. The board on the left, it indicates a two-story building. The floor plan on the upper portion of the board is the upper-level floor plan. The colors are there just so I can quickly identify the department and kind of clusters. I don't intend to go through every room, but just for TV purposes and video purposes, the upper floor plan, the area in tan are the public components, the public vestibule, public lobby, public interview, and public bathrooms. As I said, there's not a lot of public component to this, but we have the need to accommodate the public through a public lobby. From the public lobby, the public have access to an area in red, which is the dispatch center, and associated rooms dealing with the dispatch center. Most of the department would be blue spaces, and those are patrol spaces. On the upper floor, we have a training classroom for police training use, we have sergeants, we have report writing, those are patrol areas. On the far right would be administrative offices, being your head of department, second-in-command, conference room, administrative assistant. Detectives and youths are also located on this floor plan with some interview rooms for their need for interviews. And traffic is in the middle. The upper floor of the department accommodates all your staff, regular staff offices. So the upper floor is a very active floor with staff. That is very different compared to the lower level of the facility, where we don't have any regular staff located there. But this floor is your detention floor and support spaces. The green area is the Sally Port entrance. The Sally Port is a garage space that you can bring prisoners into the facility and properly process them. Area in blue would be reserved for prisoner processing. We're indicating detention cells, a total of three detention cells within that area of prisoner processing. Circulation areas are pink, so we have corridors. Large blue area in the middle would be locker rooms for male and female patrol staff. Areas on the right would be a lunchroom kitchen, and then area in brown would be all your evidence processing, evidence storage, and proper evidence storage areas. So in a nutshell, that identifies the needs and the sizes that were identified for those needs. And lastly, you have an elevation view. The elevational view is just a conceptual, it's proposed at this time, on how that building could accommodate some of your decorative requirements within your zoning requirements for your Ledger Center. So it's a building that would complement the town hall and provide a nice complement to the complex. And lastly, I have done a space needs assessment analysis on how to speak space needs assessment compared with the floor plan you're looking at. The space needs assessment back in October, was trying for a building of 12,130 square feet. The floor plan that you have in front of you is 12,340 square feet. So our projected, the lower level is 6,090 square feet, the main level is 6,250 square feet, for a total of 12,340. Tonight, we're just at a snapshot in time. We are still progressing along our task, and our final assignment is a cost estimate. How much? Our cost estimator is working on that as we speak, and I have to report Monday at the next Municipal Building Committee on cost analysis. And we're going to be preparing cost analysis on the two sites that you see, and the site work costs are different on these two sites. The building costs would be identified, it's the same building. And we're also looking and trying to anticipate what Gales Ferry School cost might be if that was a renovation to accommodate these needs. So we're planning on addressing three areas of cost, and that would be Monday. Unfortunately, I don't have that information, and everybody wants to get to that, how much? But as of tonight, we don't have that information as of yet. I'm here for any questions or...
That concludes... Counselor Hobbs?
I have another question about the, just your decisions made in the use of the space. I noticed you didn't use all the space in this site here. Here's a municipal green, which today is kind of parking lots, sort of. And then to the back of the property, it looks like you didn't use all the space there. So I was interested in your rationale.
We're just trying to make efficient use of parking with cars and maneuvering and trying to maximize the site for parking. We have to come up with a very organized circulation path in the rear of the site.
Sure.
That municipal, what we labeled as municipal green, really ended up to be a tortured parking arrangement if we're going to try to use it for parking. A lot of expense with not a lot of gain. We have identified the need for about 90 parking spaces on the total site. I think we have our parking calculations. We've been producing those along with the plans on how we can meet a goal for parking to meet both of these, all of the needs on the site at once. So we've met the goal as total numbers, and we're proposing that those areas be converted over to green space.
Is the landlord all back on board with selling the parts of the property?
It's not a conversation I've had.
As I reported last month, I've had a conversation with the landlord. We just wanted to make sure that it was in interest, and this particular site being in the water, she had the site here, we need drainage, and there's a possibility of providing drainage. The property drains onto the purchased property right now, not very nicely through the pipe. So we already have that, but we could certainly, that's something we have to consider. Thank you, Grant.
As you look at this site here as one complex, was there any discussion to having more of the police department building up the level and conference rooms and things like available for dual use, as opposed to restricted and a primary only for the police department use, to make a more efficient use of town resources?
Actually, that was one of the major changes when we went from 14,200 square feet to 12,100 square feet. In the original space needs assessment, there was a desire by the police department to have a community training classroom, a room that you can invite the community into utilize for their use for police training, but also a public component to bring the public in and have a community use out of that room. They don't have it currently.
If I understand, in putting the building here, there wasn't much discussion that Brian said about that. Putting the building here on this site, it was understood that there's already a large, actually two conference rooms in this building, and to put, you know, an additional community room as such, keeping in mind that the community room would have to be manned, you know, you don't typically go into a police station even if it's a separate area. Now, if you look at some other surrounding buildings, most recently non-built, they have a community room there, but that building is really off by itself. The other thing is, you know, up at the transfer station, you know, who's going to go for a meeting up to the transfer station? Also, keep in mind, here in the center of town, there's another very large public facility right down the street of the library. So the thought was, you know, we felt that we wanted to use economy here, and that that was something that we did not want to put in the building. However, there is a... However, there is a room for the police, there is a, that certainly could accommodate that for their training. And if there was something of a larger scale you'd be inviting people in, this, you know, this room is certainly available. And, you know, I'll say right up front that one of the things that I would certainly encourage if we did put the building on this site is to take advantage of any bond there to do the types of improvements we need at this site. You know, we all know that within the next few years, you need a new parking lot, no doubt about that, you might need a new set pieces. And, you know, we've talked about this right here, when you're talking about, you know, spending millions of dollars to put an extra 40, 50, or even $100,000 into this building to make this room and the other conference room more adequate, it would be a good investment for the town.
Good, go ahead. On Monday, are you going to be prepared to have site development costs too, as well as building development costs?
Yes, we're going to try, in addition to that, we're going to also have soft, projected soft costs, and then the seats, and try to present a total project cost.
Good. Just want to make a comment that I've made to the building committee in the past. I've worked on the, or served on the Leger Town Center Committee for years, and the pitch that I made to the building committee, and I'm going to make again tonight, is that we do everything we can to make it economically feasible to put this station in the center of town. One of the things that doesn't go into a cost estimate, I'm sure you're going to find that it, I think you will agree, it's going to be cheaper to put it out at the transfer station. But the vision that the Town Center Committee has for Leger is that we want to, we have and we want to continue to maintain a village feel. Other communities outside Leger have sprawled. If you ask, where's the center of Groton, where's the center of Langkora, Waterford, you know, it's all over, there are municipal buildings everywhere. Municipal buildings in a village center bring economic development through vehicle traffic to the residents or the businesses that are already here in town. In addition to that, I really think it's important to have a visible police presence. The police station we have now is so far out of the way, people know it's there, but you don't see it. And driving through the center of Leger with retail businesses, with a school, with the library, I think a police presence says more, a lot more about this is a village community. And people tend to slow down in front of police stations.
Well, just a little.
Just a little. So I'm, what I'm asking is that we consider not just the physical cost of the building, I know it's going to have to be squeezed in here, but the, the cost to Leger's businesses of spreading the village center out further and further is also a true cost, and I think a large cost. So, thank you.
You know, I would add to that too, take a drive through Gales Ferry and look at what CVS has done just for the appearance down there. I mean, it's like an entirely new area. Imagine what a beautiful new police department would do for the center of this town, and also for economic development, to spur it on, to encourage it.
And the fact that we can't sell the building anywhere.
There is that.
And to add to that
It's non-marketable.
Add to that, it's worth the price of reducing the curb cuts
Yes.
Finally.
Yes.
And remember, there is a grant that the town has put in.
Steve Graham.
I'm speaking as the mayor now, not as someone sitting on the building, on the building committee. I don't want to be too influential, but, you know, we have applied for a grant to a sidewalk here in Leger Center to reduce curb cuts and get things like that. And that in itself, just, just think of, you know, taking the front of what's in front of the town hall right now, whatever it is, and just expanding that over there with parking, you know, behind the building, the way we're required to do, and how that would change the appearance just of that area there, the right of way going down to the whole group of property, you know, all the pieces of curbing that seem to accumulate there. So there are, again, I would echo what Council Salmons said, we have to look at price, but there are intangibles that go along with each site.
And this is a nice
Beautiful, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Board of Ed presentation for the renovations to the middle school. Dr. Van Nen.
Thanks so much. Does the town councilors have the, the
Yes.
Graffs? Oh, great. I just have a few copies to throw around. Members don't have enough, so I'm going to copy. This is a bit of a, a bit of a coincidence, the last time I was here, Mayor Radolet, we were hoping to get the granting, grants for approval to hire an architect, and so we were actually pretty much at the exact same spot. And when we received your approval last, April, I think it was, we hired an architect, the architect took a look at, at our building, and I'll just, I just orient you to this, hopefully this thing is going to work. No, I knew, I knew that it definitely didn't happen. It worked for my friend, the other architect, but it doesn't work for me. So lasers on this thing doesn't, we'll make a mental note of that, but at least it's colored. So the right-hand side is, is in blue, and that is a new wing. So I'm going to, going to kind of walk you through really four major objectives that we were trying to achieve here. The first objective is to reorganize the middle school. We thought a long time ago that moving, that reorganizing the middle school to include sixth graders wasn't the best interest, but in the last two years, ever since the common core curriculum has been implemented, we know that the instructions, particularly in math and science, really needs to be provided by a certified teacher in that area, so it's just getting so complex. And so the idea is, the first thing we asked the architect was could he design a wing? And so the, the blue wing there includes, on the far right-hand side, the science classroom, and Come up here, just do a little, a little pointing. So you also, well, you're orienting the rest of the building, so the, so the green, the green classrooms and the yellow area and the green area, that is the existing building. And so what we, we said to the, the second question we said to the architect, in addition to trying to get some classroom spaces for our sixth grade children, is could we design traditional classrooms? That's to say, classrooms that have walls.
Endorsed.
Endorsed. And, and the problem, the problem with that, of course, at least when we had our walk-through last November, is that this is a, this is a space that actually is pretty disruptive because there are no interior walls, and so there could be in a space this size, two, two classrooms and a couple teachers are teaching, and, and so, but we weren't sure, frankly, that we could actually design this and still have the same fire protection system. And so the architect came in and gave a rather unique solution to that. This, this white area here in the middle is currently the media center. And so he said, if we took the roof off the media center, we could actually build a courtyard. And around that courtyard, we would surround it with glass, and in that glass, you'd have eight classroom, two, six classrooms on one side, and six classrooms on the other side. So there would be 12 30 by 30-foot classrooms that would overlook the courtyard. The courtyard is important because we really wanted to create classrooms that had natural light. There's a fairly good research that, that shows that some of us do work in interior spaces that have no light, and I think it takes a toll on us as we go. But as a learning space, we really want to have light. And then the exterior wall, the exterior wall of the whole building, we're not changing, but we're proposing renovation of the existing site. So, so the six classrooms on the outside of, so will, will therefore provide natural light, and he just created a passageway down the center. So we would actually have 24 classrooms. There are eight classes, approximately eight classes in each grade, and so just that would accommodate all the sixth graders, all the seventh graders, and all the eighth graders. Not the specials yet, I'll get to that in a minute. This, this space here is, right now is the cafeteria, the stage, the gym area, all of that would essentially remain, remain the same. The big change is, we're going to flip the, we're proposing to flip the orientation, all of this would be guided of the office, because right now, our, our, this, this was a desire that we had actually before the tragedy in Newtown. We think it's a much better idea that people would enter, if you could picture the middle school, there are actually, there are sort of two entrances, one to the left as you would enter the building. The idea is that people would, would enter the, the building, and there would be a sort of a vestibule, so somebody would be buzzed in, and the office secretary would be right there, there would be a glass facade there, and the secretary would determine what the person's business was, and if it was appropriate, then they would be buzzed in, essentially a second time. So, yeah, or really a nice security improvement. And then two other features. One is, all of this, or most of our thoughts have really focused around the idea that we can close Leger Center School, which is our oldest facility, and in many ways, as we go through, Mr. Kopeck, Kopeck, we continue to run into plumbing problems and electrical problems. The building is 63 years old and it's
Getting hired.
It's not 115 yet, but I don't think we want to wait until that, that moment. We keep, you know, obviously it was not designed in 1949 for promethian boards, and it's just computers to a classroom, and we, we keep running into, in fact, this year we, we invested $25,000 to upgrade the electrical system. I think that's just going to be a kind of a continuing saga. So the idea is, we're going to close Leger Center School, and in order to close Leger Center School, of course, we would send a third of the children to Galpil School, and two-thirds of the children, about, actually one-third to Gales Ferry, and one-third to Julian Atmott. The fine enjoyment is, we need, we need about five classrooms that are currently being used at Galpil School for preschool children. We can't do it without that. And so we asked the architect if he could design a preschool, and that's what that green area is, there would be five preschool classrooms with, in classroom facilities for, for the children. This, this essentially makes, makes the whole formula work of closing Leger Center School. And then our, and our, sort of our, our fourth, our fourth goal was, we really wanted to have a kitchen. Right now, Leger has one kitchen, and all the food is prepared for the entire school district, at, at the high school. If we had this kitchen, of course, we would be able to prepare food and would be delivered easily, hot, to Gales Ferry
Rolling carts.
And Julian Atmott. Yeah, well, now, of course, it's cold, we put it on a man, and we take it all the way over there, and it's sort of semi-hot, but it's kind of a guest there. So, and then when I, when I explained this to our emergency operations director, Mr. McGuckin, he, he was really excited, because this school could then, with a very modest cost of a generator, could serve as an emergency shelter. And the reason Sean is so excited about it is, one, we would have a kitchen, two, we would have hot showers, because that would be supported by, by the generator, and he thinks big disasters, he was actually thinking about the field gear where they could land helicopters and bring in emergency supplies, and there's a nice traffic flow from, from Route 12 and to, to 14 out. So, I'll come over here. But basically, as I said, our first goal was, and it continues to be, we really want to reorganize the middle school to bring the sixth graders there. We achieved that. Secondly, we have this instructional problem, that we would love to have interior classrooms. Thirdly, we would love to be able to use this as a community resource that could be used for emergency sheltering. The last two years have proven that that's not a, that's not a frivolous thought of people, some of us around the emergency operations center team. You know, we, at one point, used Fitch, and another time, we used Stoneyton. The roads around here aren't, in a hurricane situation, aren't that great to begin with, the town trees and so forth. So having a local, well-supported emergency operations center would be great. And then, of course, the last thing is, is what is dominating everyone's thoughts, ever since the tragedy at Sandy Hook. Even, frankly, even before the tragedy at Sandy Hook, we had an orientation for parents, and we kind of showed them around the school a bit. And it was, it was my intention simply to explain to people that when you have four, four instructional spaces with essentially just bookcases dividing them, it can be totally disruptive. By the time the people got back to our, after our little tour, it became very clear that people were very upset. Again, I say this is before the Newtown tragedy. They were very upset about the security, and, you know, I think we've, we've all lived with this building, my three kids went there, and, you know, it was not a huge, a huge issue. But, but we all knew, frankly, the kids know, the joke at the middle school is if there's an intruder, you just pray you're in science class, because there are, there are four science classrooms, and we have, of course, we have lockdown procedures. And so if you're in the right space, you can, you can be relatively well-secured. But God forbid, there's an intruder, a number of people have asked me now to talk about this, but, you know, God forbid, there's an intruder, that intruder would have access to 80% of the school very quick, because there are no walls. And, and so this, this plan brings us also to, to a far greater level of security. We actually met this afternoon, our district security team, this department, and others who are on this, and this is, this is really the flaw, this is the obvious flaw in our securities. Every school in America could probably have better physical security, but the ones with open design like this one really present some problems. So what we're going to do, again, as a parallel court, our architect is coming Monday night with his estimate, and his estimate is, is going to be offset by 62.5%. By the way, the square footage that we've designed is to maximize the reimbursement from the state. In other words, if you build a slightly larger facility, they give you 62% of only a certain number of square footage. So we, we've kept it so that we maximize the entire 62.5%. So whatever it costs, 62.5% will be paid for by, by the state. And then, of course, the other aspect is that we're in the process of determining what would be saved if we did not have Leger Center School. And I can tell you, just, just from the staffing alone, it would be more than $400,000. In other words, we wouldn't have a principal, and we wouldn't have a couple custodians and so forth. Understanding that, obviously, the majority of the teachers and other staff members with sixth grade teachers would travel with the sixth grade children, so there's not massive, but, but $400,000 to be sure you even start looking at electrical
Lights.
Yeah. Yeah, and then, and then the third aspect is, as, as Mayor Radolet was talking about, that, you know, there's, there's a matter of a million-dollar roof that, you know, within five or six years anyway, we're going to have to start looking at, and, and all those electrical, and all those plumbing, so there's a, so there's a, there's the cost, there are the savings that will be, that we will achieve, and then there's a kind of a cost avoidance. We think, we think it's going to We think, we think it's gonna come at a very economical price. Not, not, not quite a, not quite a wash, but I think, for what the community, I've been, I've been sort of driven by the thought that, does this bring value to the community? And I think, Bill, you talked about really the values of having a police station in the center of town. With this, in my mind, this, this project does two things. It takes our oldest facility that has the most physical problems offline, and it takes the one that has the most glaring security problems and frankly, is the worst instructional. And it takes our problematic one offline and it gives us a brand-new, virtually brand-new, that's why the state will pay sixty-two and a half percent. Because in the end, we shall take, so here, but in the end, it will be virtually a new school with all-new plumbing, all-new electrical, all-new heating and ventilation and so forth. So we're really excited about this. So Monday night, the architect will come to the board, to a facilities committee. Wednesday night, the board will consider this and then make a proposal. And then, I will be back on the thirteenth with a sort of a formal presentation with a cost estimate for your consideration. So I'd be happy to answer any questions and Board of Ed members.
Councilor Beck.
First off, I would love to see the middle school. When my children went there, it was the bane of, I mean, those two years that the two boys went there, oh my, that noise, that, you know, it's very disruptive to the kids, you know. The land to put the addition on, we own all that.
We do, yes. A little, a little blur. If you're actually standing in front, literally use it, I think it's a little bit of recess and science experiment. There's a field about fifty yards or so that extends out and that's, that's actually, I, we're gonna, we're sort of driving this to as economical a number as possible. I think we're gonna kind of pull that in a little bit and that will save us some significant dollars. But yes, we own land.
Okay. Busing. If we close Leger Center, are we gonna see an increase in the cost of busing? I would think that it might, that you might see some of it, somewhat of an increase, but then again, maybe not, because some of these kids live in Gales Ferry and they may bust up, you know?
I don't, I don't think so. We're not gonna see an increase in the busing for kindergarten, which is why how largely we afforded to have all-day kindergarten next year, we've been delivering that day run. But the sixth graders, we have enough room on the seventh and eighth grade buses to include sixth graders, so we don't have to add buses to that secondary room.
I was thinking more about closing Leger Center School. Now we're gonna start sending the kids.
Yeah. Well, of course, all of those children are on a bus going to a school, as opposed to the children at Gallipill. I don't think there'll be a cost, because actually, what you do is you buy a bus and it does two runs in the morning and two runs in the afternoon. It costs you about forty-eight thousand bucks for that, for those two runs. And if it's a slightly longer time or slightly less money, it's still...
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Councilor Trent.
If I remember correctly, there were two gates that you have to make with the state to get approval for that. What are the dates or timeframe for this?
The first one is June thirtieth.
Two thousand thirteen?
Yes.
Every year.
You have to have an approved by the public referendum project by June thirtieth to be considered for next spring's funding. So June of two thousand thirteen would get us in the queue to be acted upon by May, June of fourteen. But there is a, there is a provision in the legislature that you can, perhaps Mary knows it better than anyone else, there's a provision you could put in and basically petition to not spend a year in the queue and have it, and have it approved right away. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna work with our legislature to do that. So potentially, we could, we could get approval this June, even though it's only gonna be in for a month or so, we could get it this June. At which point, if it were approved, then the architect would begin drawing plans and we'd start in the fall.
So the, so it's not the spring, they actually consider it each June and you have to pick it up the year before or make the following year?
Yeah, unless you get that special legislation. So I guess the normal, the normal answer is, get it in by June thirtieth and you'll be in the queue for next spring of two thousand fourteen to get the money. At which point, the architect would start drawing details.
Councilor Ekelberg?
I assume you, some of this will be done during the summertime, such as the part of walls in the classroom, existing classrooms. Start to finish, what are we looking at for time?
Probably better part of three years. First, well, first that year that Mr. France was talking about, so it could be four years. But once, once the construction begins, we would, we would build the sixth grade wing. And you're right, during the summer, we would renovate some of the office spaces and so forth. But the wing would go up and then we would, when the wing was completed, we would put, say, the seventh grade children in that wing. And actually, each side of their, where those green spaces are, is a grade of a cluster of the seventh graders and ones on the eighth grade. So we would put the seventh graders in the new wing and eighth graders leave them and we would renovate the seventh grade cluster. And then, and then sort of flip-flop. So after, after three years of construction, and Mr. Kilpatrick knows far better than I, maybe a little bit quicker than that, maybe we could get some of that work done. But I, I think, I think it's reasonable to say that it would take the better part of, assuming we don't get that special legislation, take about four years.
So potentially, fall of two thousand eighteen, Leger Center School would no longer be operating.
That's right.
Any other questions? Councilor?
I can't help but my drawing, where are those classrooms on the, on the far right?
Oh, those are the science classrooms. And there is, there's one other, two of the classrooms, you notice on the top of the blue area, it says tech ed and art. And that, those are the classrooms that are with preschool is proposed. So we've done a little bit of flipping around here, but it would provide us, provide us with adequate, adequate space for both of those programs that we want to support. And then, of course, I think I forgot to say that when we took out the center, the white part there, the media center, the media center then becomes, just moves right. And the nice part of the media center is, when you enter the media center, you'd be looking down the, for an attractive courtyard.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Well, you're very welcome and we'll be back on the thirteenth. Appreciate it.
Comments at town councils? Councilors?
I have several. I wanted to express sorrow for the loss of the Perry family last night. The Perry family is deeply connected with Leger. Brenda Perry is a para educator at Gallipill School. And I wanted to mention that on the Leger-Gales Ferry Community Forum, there is a post from Lieutenant Mike Finkelstein that says Chelsea Groton Bank has set up an account to benefit the family of Ashton Holton Perry for expenses. Donations for the Perry Family Fund will be accepted at any Chelsea Groton Bank location or the public can mail checks to the bank directly. There's an address on the Facebook site. Secondly, for the Munger family who lost their home on Nutmeg Drive during the blizzard, there is a zini dinner on Friday, March eighth, that's next Friday, from five to eight P.M. at St. David's in Gales Ferry. And finally, for Lori Cammer, who is the daughter of one of the school's fine educators who was also a very talented dancer, was paralyzed in a fall, there is a fundraiser for Lori and you can get information about that. It's on March twenty-third, also Saturday and Sunday. You can get information about that if you go to the Facebook site for the Community Dance Ensemble, of which she was a member. So if you go to Facebook, go to Community Dance Ensemble, you can get information about that. So these are all great events for, for three things that the town is doing to support its members. Very sad, but also good in a way. So thank you.
Any other council? Very good. Rule of minutes?
Some move.
Second. Any comments, questions?
Show of pride.
Very good. Rock Hill, please call the roll.
Hi. Mrs. McGroton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Woodack?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Rossby?
Yes.
Mr. Iverwood?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Eighteen favor, zero opposed.
Communications list been provided and has no referrals. Council Subcommittee Liaison Reports. Administration?
Administration Committee has not met since our last meeting, not a few years ago.
Community Services?
Yeah, we met last week and Dave Holder stopped by, it was good to see him, I haven't seen him in a while. And he updated us on the trail. You know what they're up to. An unofficial word as of that date, Mayor McNair can update this, I don't know, is that the Connecticut Recreational Trail community has awarded us a hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant to be involved in our portion of the trail. Now, we have to match twenty percent of that, thirty-two thousand dollars. If you match cash or we need to add services, they'll be able to charge five thousand dollars an hour for your service, but we have to multiply that as a dollar. We may get some help from Parks and Rec, because part of the trail runs to the Clark Farm and Parks and Rec plans on using that part of the trail for activities. So they may, they may pitch in.
Clark Farm is not under district control, Parks and Recs.
They want it, though.
They want it, but it's not under their control.
It's in the works. In the works.
Well, they're, they're trying to develop it, if they're willing to pay to develop something on the Clark Farm that benefits the trail and benefits the town, we don't care if they have control.
That's true. True, true point.
Except that we can use Clark Farm. And that section of the trail will go from Preston Park through to Clark Farm to Stars Warford, and it may be used for engineering and surveying and things of that nature. We also talked about a town-wide newsletter, just heard a question on this. I talked to Regina about maybe attaching to the town website, that's definitely a possibility. But it seems to be that the people like to have that paper in their hand every four months and look at it, keep it, hang onto it. I've spent some conversations with the library, with seniors of Parks and Recs. We're all still working on the details. To do one newsletter town-wide is kind of problematic. Who's gonna get the ads? Who's gonna put together? Who pays for what? What's their share of the cost? Could possibly have a town revision, might be the way to go.
What do we care who pays for what? If we were gonna do one newsletter?
We don't care, but they would care.
No, if we were gonna do one newsletter, we'd put it under one budget. And then it's not a worrying about who pays for what. It goes under one budget, MIS maybe as an example, goes someplace in the budget to pay for it, and then it doesn't have to come out of six little pots of money. Sorry, that's my two cents, bud.
No, it's good to get it, but then we'll put it together. We, you know, these are all things we're working out. We're still touching base there, but and we also talked about the AES job description. We've got input from all parties and we're still working on a draft for that. And when we have them, we'll get out to you. But as it stands right now, the current job description stands.
Any questions? Okay. Finance?
The Finance Committee met last Wednesday, I traditionally imagine the agenda. We had a lengthy discussion concerning the timeline for bringing the two building projects to bond and the need for this time. So it was a good discussion. Obviously, we're waiting on spittles to the Finance Committee, Council, for certain questions to Dr. Grenear is pertinent to making sure we hit the gate, if we can, to support the timeline of the state. In addition to that, budgets are coming up and we have a work session set up the first three weeks of March, so we'll be receiving the general government budget from the mayor the first two Thursdays and then following Tuesday, seven-fourteenth and nineteenth. Thank you.
Any questions for Finance? Information Technology?
Information Technology has not met since the last council meeting, but we do have a meeting this coming Tuesday and we'll be entertaining a presentation from the software company that provides communication services for the police. And we've invited the police, the ambulance, and both fire companies and dispatch to hear the presentation. And the interest is in trying to find a common software package.
Land use planning, Public Works has not met since our last meeting, no report. Board of Education Liaison?
Yep, the Board of Ed did meet last Wednesday. They are, the Board of Ed is currently working on the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen calendar. They're gonna move that along, so when they get closer to finalizing that, we'll update everybody on that. Dr. Grenear presented an update on the middle school's security. They're actually starting, they've already started that. They changed the plan a little bit. It had one door going into each cluster. So you're looking at, say, eighty kids plus staff in there with one door, with a ten-foot wide opening. So they re-engineered it to have two doors, two three-foot doors. So on the first cluster that they've already done, it's gone well. The kids are understanding the flow, flow in, flow out in each door. So they're, they're on track to get that done by the end of April vacation. The new wall is a substantial improvement. Dr. Bill Merrill reported, Business Manager reported on the revenues. So far, the state has not said anything about any changes in revenues. Hopefully, it'll stay that way. The big highlight was the budget. Dr. Grenear presented the budget to the board. It's twenty-nine million dollars and change. And the, the fine points of it are, is that the classes remain the same, staff reductions are none, there's no changes to curricular and extracurricular activities and programs, and it adds all-day K and new teacher evaluations with a proposed zero mil increase to his budget. Six teachers have accepted early retirement packages out of seven that were offered. So they, they got a number that they, I think they expected in terms of accepted early retirements. And that's about it. The Board of Ed voted to approve the budget as proposed and they have, so it's on to us.
Any questions?
Not a question or comment. I'm sorry, Dr. Grenear's not here. I've been very impressed with how proactive they've been at trying to make up those snow days and the sandy days. I mean, some of the other towns seem to be scrambling, what to do, what to do at the last minute. And he's been right along managing that calendar. And I'm very impressed by that.
Absolutely.
As a parent who no longer has children in the school, it doesn't matter to me per se, but I know it matters to every parent that works, every parent that just has a child in the school, to know what days kids are gonna have off and not.
Absolutely. He, he's been making his best efforts to see that they still graduate at the time that he has expected and he's trying to make up days wherever they can. Recently, he took out a teacher development afternoon so that the kids could go in and have a full day. And that was a proactive approach, because as it turned out, we had a delay in school that day.
Yeah.
So had the delay occurred and then we had the teacher development day, it would've been a...
Another lost day school.
Another lost day. So they, they took care of that.
Counselor?
I want to comment that, kind of feedback on the school calendar. I don't remember in past years sending it out, but feedback is positive to get that information, it's me emailing out, so I've seen the original and the update. So it's, it's nice to be aware of the process opposed to finding it after the school starts and...
Right. Exactly, having it well in advance. And they, I suspect that within the next meeting or two, they'll have that, that following calendar already approved and ready to go.
Very good. WPC, you agree on that?
I can't top a zero school budget. But, it was questioned about fire hydrants and the Grant Utilities reported that we only lost one fire hydrant in the blizzard and it was a car accident, it wasn't a plow.
Well, that means we don't stand for it.
Yes, congratulations, Public Works. Also, good news, the Everhill pump station design has been reviewed by the state. The municipal building committee, I was hoping they'd stay so they'd hear this, municipal building committee will need to review the advertisement and bid at their meeting on Monday so that we can keep it moving.
Not under agenda.
Good, thank you, Mike. So that means there will be a bid distribution March seventh and a bid opening date April ninth, ahead of our on schedule for getting the pump station.
Ahead of our on schedule, way behind when we thought we were getting it. Ahead of our on schedule for way behind where we thought we were getting it today.
Yeah, exactly. Well, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I saw all the correspondence. I saw how many times the mayor wrote and asked what was going on. So, this was a long time in coming. Thank goodness we're finally getting it.
The WPCA also noted that Eva Volcachica's last day will be March eighth. She's in the water, in the water department, Sewer Department office. And she's taking a job with another water company and.
Not Cranton.
And Michelle Maynard is going to be carrying her work in interim and the WPCA thanked Michelle for doing that. We also set a special meeting date to discuss the budget. We heard a proposal from the developer of Via Verde to change the way the new development is supplied water by connecting the town's water system through town-owned property instead of through the original plan. And the WPCA asked the developer for more information about that. We also reviewed the draft assessment study for Van Castle Drive and the Algen Heights Everhill Water Main Project. And finally, and I already mentioned this earlier tonight, there was a request from Gardenway Homes to relieve it of its commercial water rate for the community center. And that's my report.
What is the difference between the commercial and the present?
It's significantly more.
I know the commercial's eighty dollars a month minimum.
They said they're paying two hundred and sixteen dollars a month.
As for water and sewers?
Water and sewer, yeah. For the community center.
And it's how much for a quarter for a house?
Water's eighty-six.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, sixty-six for water.
Yeah, but I thought.
Sewer is a percentage of that.
Yeah. I don't know. I don't have a sewer. Yeah. So, it's eighty for commercial?
Eighty for commercial water, yeah.
Yes, yes. Yeah. Twenty percent serious.
Do we know if that cost is passed on to the tenants in the parks?
Yes, we'd be through the common charges.
Right, that's what I would think. So, I guess I'm stuck on why they're.
Why they'd be commercial?
Well, why, or why they even want to change it that much, yes. If the reality of it is it's a common area charge, it's passed through to all the.
And maybe it's not yet because maybe it's not enough if it's developed and it hasn't been turned over to the association yet. I mean, that's always an issue with any condominium association, has to be enough of it built.
Or they're just trying to get back at Larry.
I think it's probably that one.
It would have to be in their leases for the property, so.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if there are any passed down costs like that today. It's probably something that's absorbed by the property owner.
Yeah, but the property owner, when he develops it and now turns it over to the condominium association.
It's not a condo. It's a land lease.
Oh.
It's not a condo.
So, they have common charges?
Not for land lease.
Okay. Well, they have common charges for the water and stuff.
No, they pay their own water.
They do.
Prices pay their own water. Uh, Other Liaisons? Hearing none, report of the mayor.
Okay, thank you. Once again, I'd like to thank our Public Works Emergency Management Team, Deputy Mayor Linda Davis, Town Hall Staff, Emergency Services for going above and beyond during the last storm. Especially, I want to note our Public Works, the reports we were getting from other towns and that had taken a different approach as far as using their staff. From what I understand, the roads in Ledyard were better sooner because our staff opted to work right through forty-two hours. And by doing that, I think they were able to just keep ahead of the storm, maybe the storm. I never remember an incident like this where I received as much positive mail and phone calls and emails from people as we've had in the past. So, again, my thanks to them. We did conduct a debrief last week with the Emergency Management Team just to see, you know, do once again what went right, what went wrong. You know, all of the, you know, this is, I said early on that, you know, you could, when we were doing all of the post-Irene planning that, well, we'll do this, but we're not going to use this for ten years because that's how often you get a serious storm. You had at least two opportunities now to exercise ourselves. And, you know, we're still learning. Some of the things, you know, such as social media communications, we think we can do a better job getting the word out. Some that we control, some of it we don't with the local media. The use of warming centers and shelters is always, it's always a matter of where the power goes out. You know, once again, we had power to all of our main buildings, so it wasn't an issue. But one of the things that we're starting to realize is we keep talking about the high school and now the middle school as potential shelters. And we're realizing more and more that we've got just after two major storms and in both storms, the Red Cross and the people who made the decision designated shelters in other areas other than Ledyard. And the question I ask is do we really ever believe that Ledyard is going to be designated, you know, as a, as a shelter? Logistics wise, you know, now, there's a positive to that, which is in both storms, there were other towns that were much worse off than Ledyard and therefore, that's why they opened the shelter in Stoneington rather than designate it Ledyard. But it really makes us step back and think, you know, is it something that we ever planned to do as opposed to doing what we did this time, which is, you know, shuttling people? There were a number of people who requested to be shuttled and we took them down to Stone. So, again, we certainly need to think this through, but, you know, there are major investments in bringing generators and bringing power to facilities. And you have to ask yourself, you know, whether, whether it's what. Now, certainly, the middle school has much more of an attraction because it's literally right in the middle of a very populated area. So, that certainly would help the high school to a certain degree. So, it's just something that we think about both for future storms and long term. The Pro Act prescription discount cards should be mailed next week. We have a press release ready to go to alert people to that so that people recognize it is a legitimate plan and it does have real savings. So, there's going to be a lot of publicity on that to get the word out. Getting back to the storm, we are gathering data. We've already begun discussions with FEMA about reimbursements for the snowstorm. And we're also finishing up our submittals for Storm Sandy for reimbursements there. You never know how much you're going to get back because, you know, you're going to a pool and it's kind of divided up according, you know, partly prorated. So, we do expect to get some money back. And when we look at our budgets for different accounts, we seem to still be doing okay considering that we should be able to reimburse some of those accounts. You know, surprisingly, and I don't know if Public Works Director shared with you, but, you know, our, our, our snow plow, our snow plowing budget is not that bad. We're right, you know, at the limit. And that's not bad considering what we have to expend, you know, that we were plowing brush in October, which, you know, we do. I want to bring you up to speed and just give you a status of the dispatch and where we are with dispatch. I know it's been a long process and I know people are very anxious for a decision there. I certainly, certainly was my intent to be able to make all three of the decisions that I talked about this evening by July first. I don't know that that's going to happen for a number of reasons. What we're doing and again, where we are right now with the dispatches, we have three credible providers, Montville, Rotten, and Ledyard Communication. Those are three viable. Every one of them is viable. Every one of them has its pluses, its minuses. And every one of them could probably very quickly be up to speed. We have met with each of them. We are meeting more extensively with our own dispatch because there are a number of things inherent to our own dispatch that we need to clarify. So, we were supposed to meet with them last week. That got postponed. Now, we'll meet, I believe, next week. So, you know, please be assured that that process is moving forward. The Public Safety Subcommittee that's overseeing this has set the end of March as the decision date for the next step. At the end of March, do we proceed to go out for pricing or do we think at that point we can make a decision without taking that next step? So, that's where we are right now as far as that goes. The budget is moving along. I fully expect that to be submitted next Monday. The People GIS kiosk is up and running in the Land Use Office. And if you're in the neighborhood, you ought to stop down there. There is a monitor right there where you can go in and we've already had people doing it, going in and, you know, online, getting their, getting their permits, getting the building, rectable plumbing permits. It's a little bit like going to the airport and there's, you know, the ticket agents are all standing there and you try to talk to them, they're like, no, no, you gotta use, you gotta use the kiosk. You know, we have our staff there, very anxious to help people, but, no, you've got to do it through the, do it through the, through the kiosk. And there are some issues with it, but it's working and they are getting, they are getting permits in through that. And I just think that that is, is just really where we need to be throughout the town hall. There are other applications that come up every day for that type of, that type of the system. It's at the senior center today and there were applications there also that we were talking about in terms of usages for that and what we could do with it. Training for our emergency services people could all be done and tracked through the system. Thank you, Council Marshal, for bringing up the Tri-Town Trail. I agree with everything you said about that. The hundred and sixty thousand dollars is part of, hundred and sixty thousand dollars is part is a design contract. But what we're doing right now is we're waiting for the next piece of that, which is a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, which we've applied for through the Department of Transportation. Planner Charles Kono and I will be going to the Council of Governments on Monday to their executive committee because as you remember, the Council of Governments, there's three projects, they endorsed the Ledyard project. However, when we went up to the state DOT to talk about it, they didn't quite see it as clearly as we did. So, we're working on that and the thought being if we were to secure that and what that grant would basically do is get us from Preston to the Clark Farm, which we see as a natural phase of the program. Get you to a town-owned piece of property that's ready to be developed, it has ready access. It's a one-mile track, you know, one-mile stretch, which would be, you know, you could walk, walk both ways. So, it makes a lot of sense to do that. However, we're holding up with any design until we, we see about this on the grant. Now, the problem is also that because the grant is coming with federal money, it has to be built to federal standards. So, the price suddenly goes from three hundred thousand dollars to a million dollars because now, you know, you need a ten-foot wide path, bridges going over different, you know, bodies of air. That's a bit of a struggle. So, we are working on that and I mean, keep you up to speed on that. And that's our. Thank you. Any questions, mayor?
First, welcome back. The council is going to pass a resolution that forbids you from leaving down because every time you go, we have some kind of a.
Or at least telling us in advance when your next vacation.
Yeah, so that we can.
Actually, he did, he did this time. We knew about it after the last one.
Yeah, but still, it's, you know, although Linda Davis did do a fine job in your asses, things did run very well. My question is about the police station. We just saw the presentation of the police station, which I do favor being next door, by the way. But in it, it's a, it has dispatch and in it, it has a Sally Port. Both of those decisions are the other two decisions that you plan on making. So, don't we have to make those two decisions before we?
You bring up an excellent point. The answer is yes. Let me say this. We will be, if we were to go to referendum on this shortly, in the next few months, we would be asking people to bond the project for a certain amount of money.
Correct.
The price of that building can only go down, if you could say that. People don't vote on a.
Sometimes, sometimes they don't go down even when we take things out. I mean, but yeah.
You know, we're looking at something going forward. I think we will know pretty close to the time when, when we go to referendum and what we're going to do with dispatch. If I haven't said it publicly, I'll say it now, I think it's a matter of time before we go to an independent police.
You said that publicly.
So, you know, even if it's in two years, it's going to happen. I think the state, that the direction state's going is pointing that way. And so, I don't think it's, it necessarily would be a significant cost driver. It is, it is a driver, it does, it does drive the cost of the building somewhat. For example, you know, Montville has quite an extensive Sally Port and cells in their police station. They do not have an independent police force.
No, they don't.
East Lime, I've had conversations with them and they are having serious considerations also. So, I understand that those other two decisions seem to come first. I think we're moving down the path together and hopefully, it will all come together.
No, I firmly believe we need a new police station. A retrofitted barn doesn't really work that well. And having been on finance long enough to see how much we've been paying on that heating system that's still not working right, I mean, we definitely need to replace the building. It's just now we're looking at a building that has dispatch in it, but we might not have dispatch. Has a Sally Port, we might not need one. So, I just figured I'd bring out the point that I think we've got to make two decisions before we choose the building. Not that that should matter. I agree with you. If you go to referendum for a price higher than we end up spending, nobody's unhappy with that. Thank you.
Counselors.
I think to your point, Counsel Wodecki, even if we didn't make a decision, we can still build a building. You don't have to fit out the dispatch center, you don't have to fit out the Sally Port, just build a structure.
But I think if we don't have dispatch, the building can be smaller. Because there's, there's an area dedicated to dispatch.
It's a small area.
Well, it's, but it's, it's, you know, it's, the Sally Port could be used clearly as storage or anything like that. And the idea is it's being built into a hillside in both plans, so the idea of having garage doors makes sense, so.
Parks and Recs will be in there in a second.
It's, it's, it's not a, it's a secure building, they can't get in.
Now, I don't think. Okay, Counsel Prinze?
I have two questions. One, the, we applied for a grant for Main Street for Galesbury Center. Do we know what the timeline is on that?
All I can say is that last year, the STEEP grant that we applied for in, in Galesbury, that we didn't get, we didn't get that in the springtime. But what happens with those is it's on a rolling process. You know, the governor likes to go and travel around, so I did ask that question this week and, you know, we anticipate the decision sometime this spring.
Maybe you need to invite him to town. Take him for a tour.
The second thing is after Irene and from the last two storms, we had several conversations on trees. CLMP has done work in the town. Is there any, any plans for CLMP to continue their work?
That is, that is a good question because we know that, as you said, it was a very serious effort that they made after Irene. And I will say that I think a lot of the success, or the fact that we're seeing less in some cases, power outage is because of that. Now, if you drive right around, drive around roads, it's amazing how much is still coming down.
Yes.
But that is a good question. Again, last year, there was an incredible effort, an incredible effort.
It was mostly on main roads.
It was. It was main roads and they designated certain roads. There's an ongoing effort. There are trees that even our, our Public Works have identified and we've worked together. I get, I get messages from people, hey, I'm a tree. And so, it is being worked and I have to believe that CLMP is going to continue that effort.
Well, it'd be nice to get from them, if it's not a five-year plan, the next year's plan of where they're going, what their plan is structurally, certainly if there's reports of trees that come back and you feed that back, that would be a one-off. But if they have a plan of how they're going to move through the town, I've had several residents that I work with that they didn't come down my street. Well, I understand that. So, they don't believe that anything happened. So, I had to go, you know, the stuff they have in Galesbury Center, Village area was an unknown until I asked the question. So, maybe, you know, we'll see about what's been done, what the plan is for CLMP, if they have one.
Let me just say, a couple of. Let me just say a couple of things. First of all, if people see that they have trees that are at, or could be a problem, have them identify them to us, you know, we go up there, we look at them, and we make a decision. Secondly, we have an excellent CLMP representative, we've gone through a few of them, the one we have now is just.
And are you still in contact with that one?
Oh, yeah, in fact, I just saw, he showed up at the Cog meeting, and he's great, he keeps in touch with us, and he is, you know, this is kind of his job, you know, he's not a lawyer or something that we.
Oh, you mean, he's not one of the people that they just reassigned?
This person's really excellent, so, but that's a good question that, you know, with the storms, we never really thought about, hey, come the spring, are you going to be out there trimming trees again?
What's your plan?
Yeah, I will look into that.
And the second part aspect goes along with that, is our own Public Works, they do the same kind of work throughout the town, and I've asked, several separate conversations, our Public Works Director, what's your five-year plan? How are you maintaining the town roads in the same vein? Have not, to date, received a response back of what that plan is for the town.
I can probably tell you that plan, it depends what their resources are, manpower and money is what determines what comes down.
I understand. You know, but if you have a staff, they do work, and if you don't have a plan, then you have nowhere to go. So, you have a plan, and you have staff that are funded, and they have a plan to go.
And then Sandy comes along, and Irene comes along.
I was up at Public Works this week, and what they said to me is, you know, get us a cherry picker. We don't have that type of equipment, so when you look at anything that requires that type of work, we've got to hire it out, or get CLMP maybe to do it for us, and that, that is a weakness that we have, we don't have that type of capability.
No, we hire someone to do it.
And that's a very limited budget, this, he showed us.
The good news is, a couple more of these significant storms, and there doesn't want to be any trees left to come out.
All right, any other questions, the mayor? All right, moving, old business, admin.
The Administration Committee has not had a chance to review this ordinance, so we have no movement on this.
Very well. New business, administration. Oh, yeah. We want to like to men who did it.
Yeah, we can do, we can do, hold last item first, let me just go home. We have so little promotions here.
All right, Administration Committee.
I'd like to make a motion to support the mayor's decision relative to Southeastern Connecticut Council of Government's Regional Ethics Commission proposal.
Second.
In the background, the mayor came to us with a proposal on a regional ethics commission. The Administration Committee, do you take a look at this? And basically, we came to a consensus that we will support the mayor in his decision, and so that's the motion.
Begging the Cog, but could you please tell me what my decision is?
We don't know, we thought.
Well, this is, this is, this is in a letter that you gave us, it said, you said that you were not in favor of doing that, of being part of this at this time.
The Regional Ethics Commission. So I said I wasn't voting, I wasn't in favor.
You weren't in favor, but we had a discussion, yeah, we had a discussion.
You're voting to support that I'm not in favor.
We're voting for your decision that you're not in favor of it.
You asked for our opinion, so they decided to give you a vote.
I'm a little surprised that you're voting on this, because, just to refresh our memory, the Cog took this on, and they're, they have a committee developing this commission, and I was taking the luxury of waiting until they came back to see what exactly they came up with and what it is. So, at the, at the present time, I guess I'm not in favor of it, when I wrote that letter.
Would you prefer we don't vote on this?
I would prefer that you not vote, that you table that and withdraw the motion.
Essentially, essentially what we're saying is that, you know, since we do not go to the Cog, you do, you get to see this, you get to see the proposal that's being put forward, and we were kind of of mixed opinions, we don't feel like we need a town ethics committee or commission, thought maybe a regional could be a good idea, but we're not really sure because we haven't seen the full proposal either, and so we wanted to support you, Mr. Mayor, in your decision.
So in other words, whatever you decide after this vote, you get to do?
Because I think you have to come back to the council.
So, why don't we wait? Some of my friends are for it, some of my friends are against it.
I was not in favor of it, but I was not in favor of a regional ethics commission. The others, the other two were.
I would.
That would be kind of.
The other two.
I will withdraw the motion.
The only argument to do is that if we do decide to do this, it would mean we'd have to revise the charter to, to recognize that we have a regional ethics commission that we would report to. Item number two on the agenda.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the proposed amendments to ordinance number four, ordinance providing for the terms of office and method of election or appointment of a zoning board of appeals for the town of Ledger, as contained in the draft dated February 4, 2013.
Second.
Any discussion? Hold those up, Rockton, call the roll.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Murratt?
Yes.
Mr. Saun?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Land use planning, Public Works. I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a proposed lease agreement between the town of Ledger and Lisa Mazzaro to lease one classroom at the Galesbury facility, formerly known as former Galesbury School, located at Seven Herbal Road, Galesbury, as contained in the draft dated December 26, 2012.
Okay.
This was the public we had earlier about the lease agreement. Any questions?
On a technicality, it's not really a classroom, it's the former janitor's office, is that what I understand?
You're correct on this. Rockton, please call and roll.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Murratt?
Yes.
Mr. Saun?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
In favor, so no opposed.
So, I don't have nothing for the work session.
Motion to adjourn.
So, move. Our adjourned at nine, at about.
It's eight thirty-four.
You messed up my schedule.
Sorry?
Nothing to discuss.
No, but why keep discussing, it's just an hour, I forgot to the last.